Board of Trustees meeting February 26, 2020. The first order of business will be, is this too loud? What's that? Okay. The first order of business is that we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At the beginning of our meetings, we... Did you need to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
We are going to amend the agenda so that Mindy Thorpe, who is here to make a presentation about a partnership with the U.S. Census Bureau, will go right after the constituent reports. So could I have a motion to amend the agenda and move Mindy up on that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. The next thing is that we typically have a reading of the mission statement at every board meeting, and so Trustee Howard has volunteered to do that.
I didn't volunteer.
Yes, you did. I volunteered you.
Happy to do it. North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho community it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. We have a quorum, and as far as the review of the minutes, are there any additions or corrections or deletions that need to be made to the minutes? Hearing none, they will be, they're approved as stand. Is there any public comment? Shannon's going to check on that for us. No public comment, okay. Celebrating success, we have the NIC Culinary Arts Program with Hillary Faieta Genepa, and I apologize if I've butchered the name. Was it okay? And let me try this next one, Jeff Jenkins.
President, Trustee Dunlap, if I may please introduce them a bit?
Pardon me?
May I please introduce them a bit?
Oh, you bet. Go ahead, Lita, I'm sorry.
Thank you for inviting up our faculty who are going and students who will be presenting the Culinary Arts Program. I just wanted to take a minute or so to talk about this outstanding program. You know, this has always been kind of one of our star programs at North Idaho College, primarily because of the little restaurant that is run called Emory's out of the Headland Building, and I can't even tell you how long the program has been in existence, but it has quite the reputation, not only on our campus but in the community. And Jeff Jenkins has been working for us for well over 10 years now, and he is the expert in the front house, so really prepares the students to know all things about how to managing the front house of the restaurant, how to interact with customers and greet and make everybody feel welcome and wonderful, which is the experience that everybody receives when they go to Emory's, for those of you who have been there before. And then about three years ago, we were lucky enough to hire a chef who has remarkable credentials and came to us to help us to revitalize the Culinary Arts Program, and together she and Jeff have just done that. They have looked at the curriculum, looked at best practice out there, and the first thing that they did, and I don't want to steal all of their thunder, but they added a second year to our program. It has made all the difference in our Culinary Arts Program. So I will stop there and allow them to provide their own presentation of this program.
Thank you, Lita, appreciate it. I'm Chair Dunlap. Members of the board, thank you for inviting us to Celebrating Success, a great honor for the Culinary Arts Department. I, Jeff Jenkins, am here with Hillary Genepa as culinary instructors of the Culinary Arts Program. We work very closely together as a team, with myself teaching what we call front-of-house operations, which includes customer service, hospitality, and business management. And then Hillary, more commonly referred to as Chef, teaches in the back of the house, the kitchen. So that includes all the food preparation, addition to menu planning, and nutrition. We work very closely together, and it's not uncommon to see myself in the kitchen or a chef in the dining room giving some instruction or guidance to a student. Our culinary department has recently gone through a change, as Lita mentioned, to a two-year program. So this is our first full two-year program. With this change, many great, great things are happening for our students, and I'd like to share some of that excitement with you, and the excitement that that's been brought for the second year. First, the quality of our soon-to-be graduates is just amazing. Our real-life kitchen and kitchen and dining room lab provide them the leadership skills and management skills that they're going to be going out into industry along with their experiences. Most of them are working in the industry now, that they'll be going right into managerial and leadership roles in industry. The second year has allowed me as an instructor to even impress further upon the students that cooking is not enough. To run a successful business, you need to have all the other things that go along with that. You need to have management, accounting, marketing, to list a few. The second year has afforded that. Speaking of marketing, have you noticed some of the pictures that I've had up on the slides? Pretty incredible, eye-catching.
Yeah, that looks good.
I'd like to specifically recognize...
Do you have any of those, Jeff?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any of those right now, the pie that...
I know we need some treats here, don't we? I would specifically like to recognize one of our students who'll be talking in a few minutes, Angelica Sanchez. She has taken on the marketing of our Culinary Arts Program through Facebook and Instagram. Initially, tried to talk Angelica into promoting our program through Facebook last year, and I could just never get her started. And I finally figured it out, they're not on Facebook anymore. So once I figured out that we can get her on Instagram and we can flow that information down into Facebook, it was gold. She started off this year, and she has blown Facebook and Instagram up. Some of her individual posts on Facebook have got reached over 12,000 people, and pretty amazing when we just started it this year. That's also brought along some other benefits to that marketing. So not only initially, Angelica kind of started that marketing for, what I wanted to do was to let our current Emory's guests know the current menu as well as current events, and also use it as a job board for our alumni as well as current students, because we have so many employers calling us looking for our students. That's been working great. We have a lot of new faces in Emory's. It's great to have people come in, "Oh, how did you hear of us? Oh, we saw it on Facebook. We didn't even know you had a culinary program." So it's really worked well that way. But one of the more exciting things that I've found is Instagram really communicates with our future students. And this is the part that I'm really excited about, because when we go to recruiting events, and Hillary and I have gone to the high school, to the recruiting events and so forth, and when we bring students, the students talk to their future students, and there's a buy-in and credibility there that Hillary and I just can't offer. And it works. And this Instagram seems to be a great platform for that younger generation to communicate what they're doing in the program here to our next future student. The program has been going for over 20 years, as Lita stated. Thank you to Rick Schultz, we're starting the program all those many years ago. He was a great mentor to me as I kind of got into education at the college here, so thank you, Rick, little shout-out. Let's see, I want to make sure I didn't miss anything there. Okay, next I'm going to be introducing some of our students. I have three stu... Oh, I want to talk about the mentorship. So part of the having a second-year program has really created this mentorship relationship between the second-year and first-year students, and that has been amazing. The second-year students, well, to back up a bit, with a one-year program, three weeks into the semester, we'd be serving lunch to guests, food, and it was pretty intimidating and pretty daunting for a brand-new student to be doing that so early in the game. So by having a second-year program, the second-year students can really take charge and get in there and take menu development and create everything, and we're up and running immediately. The first-year students get the benefit of really kind of stepping down a little bit and slowing down and really working on their foundational skills and things so that they can do that and build confidence before jumping in there. And they could observe and kind of help out with those other skills as well and see what they will be doing, so. I have three students that are going to be presenting today. Noah Howard, who is a first-year student, and Angelica Sanchez, and Claire Partridge, both being second-year students. They're going to tell you a little bit about themselves and kind of their goals and ambitions, which are great, and they're also going to kind of talk about this mentorship relationship a little bit from a student perspective. So I'd like to introduce Noah Howard.
Hello. My name is Noah Howard. I'm a first-year student at NIC's Culinary Program. Working here at the NIC Culinary Program has been a great experience. The ability to be able to come into this program without any culinary experience and learning the amount I have learned is amazing to me. In the first years, we learn about the foundation of cooking in a professional kitchen setting with a very hands-on approach. I've quickly learned how to use every piece of equipment in the kitchen, professional knife skills, and how to efficiently get all I need to get done in the time that I need to get it done. On top of learning the kitchen, we've also learned the basics of many cooking methods, such as braising, steaming, saute, and grilling, just to name a few. We also started baking, which is another very expansive skill. Not only do we get to learn the aspects and execution of tasks in the kitchen, but we also get real-life experience on customer relations and interaction. We get to serve as waiters and waitresses in the Emory's Restaurant as well as serving or helping customers in the NIC Deli. Having real-life experience on customer interaction is very important, and studying customer relations and talking about it in class can only get you really so far. So the application of it in this program to be able to interact with customers is invaluable. It helped us learn how to work together as a team, and when someone needs help on something, you can always count on someone else to be able to provide that help that was needed. Learning teamwork in the kitchen at Emory's will prepare us for the same level of teamwork that we have, teamwork and reliability that our future employers will count on us having. So just overall, just working here and being able to study with the other, the second-year students and first-year students together has just been a great experience. It has helped so much. Jeff and Hillary are such great teachers, and the ability to be able to work with them and then having the mentorship from the second-year students is amazing, in my opinion. My goals would, to be a, is to be a executive chef or some type of manager in a fine dining restaurant is my goal. I've learned so much at Emory's and appreciate that Northern Idaho has such a great culinary program.
I'm Angelica Sanchez, and I'm a second-year student in the program. I'm currently working as a resort banquet chef at the resort, and I work as a cook at the Korean food truck at Prairie. When I first learned about the program, I thought that all we're going to do is just cook in our culinary classes, but I realized that it was so much more than that. It's not just learning how to cook, it's, but also how to manage a restaurant and able to keep up with the food trend and the demand. When we make our menu, we collaborate and give out ideas by doing research, and we would combine all of our one recipe into the other and add out our twists into it. We applied our skills from what we learned last year in our menu planning class. We also have our international cuisine class this year, where we appreciate and learn about international food. We would incorporate the dishes that we discuss in class to Emory's, and we had some Russian cuisine, French, Korean, Brazilian, and also Filipino cuisine. After the introduction to restaurant customer service operations, we have our restaurant entrepreneurship class this semester. We're developing a business plan for a business such as restaurant and resort, and that includes menu, design, and marketing plan. We are learning to understand the risks, challenges, and opportunities that come with working and or owning a restaurant. We made a lot of changes in our marketing style and managing. The second year was a little bit more involved in managing this year, and the mentoring relationship with the first years, and with that, the second years got to learn a little bit more about leadership skills in the business industry. We created the strong Instagram and Facebook presence, which received attention from a spoken and cordial food appreciation group, as well as drawing in more customers from the community. We are featured in one of the Crime 2 News special for the restaurant section, if you guys saw that, and Living Local, Cordillane Magazine, November issue, and the North Idaho College Sentinel Magazine. We are also collaborating with the Gathering Garden and able to get local grown produce and be a little bit more sustainable in our restaurant. I take most of our high-quality pictures and post it in our social medias, and those are, and these are the examples of the dishes that we made, those ones. We got those. All the desserts mostly made by Claire. And those. Yeah, and if you want to follow us, those are Instagram and our Facebook account. And in two years, I hope to be probably studying, continue my studies abroad, and get my bachelor and master's degrees, degree in business, and be an executive chef and have my own resort in the Philippines. Thank you. And we have Claire next.
Hi, my name's Claire. As Jeff mentioned, I am a second-year student as well. When I started this program, I was still in high school, so I was technically a dual-credit student, but I was allowed to start the program, which I am very grateful for now. I found a love of baking and cooking at home, and so I was very excited to start a program where I would get to use professional equipment and serve people that weren't my family. I really appreciate this program because, number one, of the opportunities that it presents as well as my teachers who have a very unique approach and the creative freedom that I've enjoyed. A recent major change at Emory's was the remodel that happened last summer. The upstairs space that we have in the Headland Building was remodeled to a certain degree, and it looks very nice, in my opinion, now. This has really helped us as second-year students appreciating from what it went, what it was to what it is now. It really supports the type of menu that we like to create as second-year students with Chef. We want it to fit the customers that we're attracting with Instagram and Facebook. We also want it to support the menu that's more modern in corporations of international dishes, as Angelica talked about, as well as our own ideas. And I think it's done a great job of that, and we're really grateful for it, and we're proud to serve our dishes in this space. Another aspect of what we learn and what I greatly appreciate from culinary is something called soft skills. Punctuality, dressing professionally, being on time, and having a good work ethic are all soft skills. These are things that are pretty hard to teach outside of, the kitchen is a really good example of this, and it's very apparent when someone doesn't show up for class for whatever reason, when we're all working together in a kitchen as a team, it's very apparent how hard that is, because now you have another person who has to be too, or multiple people who have to work together, which builds teamwork, but it is a little stressful. And I think in this program, in its approach, it's very, very helpful in developing these soft skills, which are very transferable to any other job that we might pursue outside of culinary. In the future, in about two years, I hope to go to Vancouver, Canada, and work in a bakery there, and hopefully in about five years, work in either Seoul, South Korea, or somewhere in Italy in the same vein. Thank you.
I don't know how I can follow these people. I'm just going to reiterate a lot of the things that they said, but I will say, when I came here three years ago, although I had worked in other culinary programs that had food service outlets, this, Emory's, the idea of it was new to me, that it would become the actual classroom slash lab on a daily basis. And I think I probably asked Jeff a thousand times, "How is this going to work? How does this work?" But I quickly figured out, once it was in action, that it's probably the most valuable thing that we have. The experience that the students gain from that real-life experience is just beyond, I think, priceless. The aim of our program is to prepare students with knowledge, abilities, and confidence so that they will be successful in what is now a very dynamic and evolving 21st century world. Like most businesses today, food service is advancing very rapidly, and as you can see, food service is extremely faceted. Angelica, if you can help me get to the slide, that would be really great. I appreciate it. There we go, some great careers in food. I think people really don't understand how many opportunities there are with a degree in culinary, and graduates can expand upon their education and pursue careers they might not have even previously considered. Research and development, the whole non-commercial segment, food brokerage, even going into healthcare is another option. Really, it's endless, the possibilities, and I'm not sure that people understand that that's even out there for them. There's quite a lot of possibility for salary potential as well. Today's employers are really looking for candidates who are able to do much more than just cook and bake, which they've been telling you. They need employees who possess critical, well, skills, and those skills include critical thinking, problem-solving, communication, collaboration, and global awareness. They need candidates who are going to embrace technology and advance perspective so that they can address nutritional and environmental concerns and create systems that are going to increase efficiency and production. We continually strive to develop a program that is holistic, with a curriculum that supports these demands and provides a platform for both innovation and entrepreneurship. Our class and lab time are centered around very relevant and applicable exercises where students experience a real live work environment and a real live audience. Our students leave this program with tools that are not only transferable to other disciplines, but give them tools that they'll carry with them for the rest of their lives. Some of those Claire spoke of, which is about developing a strong work ethic, being accountable, being prepared, and to be able to work both independently and as a proactive member of the team. It's a real honor for both Jeff and I to be a part of the growth and journey our students experience as they realize their personal and professional goals, and with great excitement, we look forward to continually building our learning environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hillary. So, board, do you have any questions or comments for Jeff, Hillary, or the students?
Good.
Ken?
Did you have something further you wanted to say?
Oh, I can finish up. Go ahead and do questions and...
Well, I have a couple for you. Everybody's mentioned Emory's.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to give you an opportunity to do some marketing here, because this is being televised.
Oh, well, I do have some marketing right here, so. I came prepared, there's a little marketing. We want to challenge you as the chair and the board of trustees to please bring a member of the community and showcase Emory's for us and the program.
Happy to do that.
And we have the history here for you.
Oh.
And that'll include a student tour when you bring your friend in.
Excellent. In that regard, would you explain to the listening public, Emory's is open certain days of the week, what you serve, lunch, breakfast, dinner, how much does it cost? Give us an idea of what Emory's provides for the community.
Absolutely. So it does come with a little planning. Emory's is open on Wednesdays and Thursdays from 11:00 to 12:30. And almost every week of the semester, there's certain times that we have to close for special events and things of that nature. We try to keep that updated on not only the NIC website, but as you saw, on Facebook and Instagram. And we usually try to post our menus at the beginning of the week for that current week. The menu for lunch is, changes every single week, so every week you get a whole new slew of choices. So it's been great. And we do have a deli in the front as well, where they get a barista skills, and that opens earlier in the morning, about 8:30.
And just generally, what do you charge for these meals?
The meals, on average, usually are about $8, and it is an a la carte menu, which is a little bit different from years ago. So it's usually first courses are $3 to $4, main entree is usually about $8, with the dessert about $4. But with the second-year program, we felt the need to create more of an a la carte menu, because they're more doing very specific creations and have certain criteria with each of those. So.
I have some other, another question, but it's somebody else.
Todd, please.
Well, just, I have a couple, but for Ken, to follow on Ken, what would a typical menu for an entree, would you have like two or three entrees available on a daily basis?
It's usually about five entrees on the menu, in addition to one or two appetizers and a dessert.
Yeah, a couple things.
Okay.
And there's no wrong answer to this, okay? Programs inside the current technical fields, certificate, degree, whatever, you guys were a one-year program, and now you're going to a two-year program. Is there a certificate or a national organization or body that sanctions you guys? Is there like an official piece of paper that can be handed? And is there something different now with the second year where it's, you know, higher level? Like a welder that goes another year or something? How's that equate?
Would you like me to talk a little bit about that? Okay. I'm a member of the American Culinary Federation, and we're definitely seeking to get accredited with them in the future. It's a process.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're definitely, that's going on right now. We do have a certificate program, but we really encourage students to do the two-year. It really says a lot to employers in terms of their level of commitment and also their level of skill. So it is still an option, but we try to really make sure they do the two-year. And maybe I missed...
No, that's what I was looking for. So there is some stuff there, but more informal, but it's the idea of the additional training and experience, so ratcheting it up from one year to two years, and as you said, maybe more attractive to employers, again, commitment, time, additional things you're able to teach and coach, and obviously the second-year folks are taking on some additional responsibility and doing some things, so that's certainly a resume item.
Mm-hmm. The growth is really amazing between the first year and the second year.
I believe that.
Yeah, it's really obvious, so.
One last thing. I'd be curious where Angelica is going to put her restaurant in the Philippines. Most people in Corlaine don't think about the Philippines, but as a young Air Force officer, I was stationed at Clark Air Base for a bit, so it's pretty country, so I know a little bit about it.
Yeah, so I'm planning to put it on the upper island, but the middle island is really beautiful, and there's, I can, I can put an option as an island hopping activity on my resort. So there's a lot of activities available in the Philippines, so, yeah, I'm going to have a lot of tourists. I hope I see you there.
It's been a while. I've gotten old.
I'm signed up. I think it'll happen.
Trustee Wood?
Thank you for either, either one of you. I get questions sometimes about whether you have students that would be willing to take a job right now. And I think I've even had people call you. I don't know what answer you gave them, but what...
Our phones were off the hook.
So what, are they all working somewhere mostly? And do they, do you take referrals from employers?
Absolutely. And I didn't mean to interrupt you, but we invite them to come in as well so they can interact directly with the students. I think that makes a huge impact when they're able to really connect. We also have a networking event that we do, usually in the spring, where we invite a lot of local industry and so that they can have that opportunity. We do a little Taurus and the students come out and they interact with future employers. These guys are all working. In fact, Claire has, what, three jobs at this point? Just two.
Just two.
And yeah, they're...
There's such a demand.
We have more people calling us than we do students.
Wow.
So there's a lot, very, very intense demand. In fact, it even says there, aside from the government, culinary itself is the number two industry that's hiring.
Yeah.
And it's just going to keep, it'll, it's evolving, the jobs are, but it'll continue to be one of the biggest employers.
And one more, are you, when's your event in the spring, so I can tell my friend?
That's a good question. Jeff, when is the event?
Been working.
We're...
Just throw me...
Jeff forgot to write it down.
Just throw me in the email loop and I'll pass it on.
We will.
Okay.
It's usually in April.
Okay, great.
Trustee Howard?
You know, as a trustee, we sit up here and we try and make policy decisions about how we can help the community and involve the community in what we do here. And Emerys and the culinary program seems to be one of those programs that reaches out to the community in many ways. I heard you mention the Gathering Garden and you have a relationship with the Gathering Garden, which is a environmental alliance, but I'd like you to maybe talk about that a little bit. But also, I think the last time I talked to you, Jeff, you were looking at maybe having some guest chefs in, like from Anthony's or something like that?
Yes.
I don't know if that's worked out, but that's reaching out into the community. And would you talk about those efforts, please?
Yes. We try to be very involved with the community and the Gathering Garden's just one example. We actually helped with their grant to become a Gathering Garden on campus. And we worked very closely with them, so we get produce from them as much as we can in fall. I wish we got more things from them in summer and had class. But we also do a gathering, a fundraiser for the Gathering Garden every year, which is a dinner that you attended. Then as far as the advisory board, they are so energetic and helpful for our students. We have several people like the Anthony's group. They've offered to have their chefs come and show us how to break down fish and do some extra things with our students. The resort's very welcoming to any of the work that we do. They usually treat the students to a great tour of the whole resort facilities and event centers and treat them to a five-course lunch at the end, just to show how much they appreciate the students and try to encourage them to come work for them.
Pilgrims?
Mm-hmm, pilgrims.
I take my nutrition class to pilgrims as well. Yeah, we really try to get them out there. Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Good presentation. Thank you.
Jeff, Hillary, thank you very much for all you do for that program and raising the level of quality in that program. And to the students, thank you for being a part of that program, and we wish you the very best in your future endeavors, wherever you choose to do that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll have the constituent reports and ASNC, Paul McLeod.
Good evening, Chair Dunlap, members of the Board, President McLennan, and members of the audience. I have quite a bit for you. Quite a bit's happened since the last time I was in front of you. But real quick, I just want to say, as someone who's worked in the food service industry before, I can really speak to those soft skills as being super important, super helpful. So I'm really glad that that's part of the curriculum because those are just completely invaluable. So first off, we had our retreat this spring. It's an annual thing. We had, we actually just stayed here on campus rather than going off campus like we have in the past. And one different thing that we tried out this year that I thought was incredible was we actually had a lot of our own student government officers working as facilitators for different sessions, which was just incredible. I learned so much. It was very valuable and a great experience for them. We also had a couple of incredible guest speakers, including President McLennan and Tony Stewart, who briefly talked about the history of ASNC and the history of their involvement in human rights. It was really very cool, so I'm excited about that. Another thing that we had the opportunity to do in our retreat was, with the help of Victoria Michael, we reworked our mission statement, and I'd love to read that for you right now. This is our new mission statement. It hasn't been officially enacted yet, but it will be presented to students in the upcoming months. "We will amplify student voices to advocate and create change for an enhanced student experience by serving as a bridge between students, administration, and our community. This is the mission of ASNC as the eyes, ears, and voice of the students of NIC." Also, we met with Vitruvian Consultants, who gave us a wonderful presentation about safety on campus, and it was really great to see the wonderful work that's been going into safety, the areas where NIC is incredibly strong, the areas that we can improve in. They did a walk around campus to just gather more information. They answered questions. They also took in a lot of information from the officers and took note of those. It was a wonderful thing. We also, since the last time I was in front of you, inducted four new senators. We have Angela Unruh, Emily Parsons, Lindsay Bailey, and Marion Soderbergh as new senators. You may recognize Marion Soderbergh's last name as Peter's younger sister, so she's now with us as a senator, which is really great. The Events Board's been busy putting on lots of events. We had a ping-pong tournament not too long ago, and they're putting on a night at the library event. I believe it's on March 6th, coming up pretty soon here. And one last thing, we met with marketing for a roundtable discussion where we went over the new website that's being created and gave our thoughts on that. And they just had tons of questions for us about ways to better market NIC students, so we're really grateful to have the opportunity to give that input. And that's all I have for you. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments for Paul? Trustee Wood?
Of course.
Paul, great report. You brought up Tony Stewart. I think you have an event coming up that Tony and Norm Gissel are speaking at. Can you talk about that?
There is a human rights banquet coming up.
No, that's the task force, but I thought you had an event on campus that Tony and Norm were going to speak. Maybe it's not your group.
That could be something the Events Board. I'd have to look into that and get back to you.
I think it's maybe the diversity committee, is that right? Lita knows.
Yes, we do have a community conversation coming up with Mr. Norm Gissel and our own Tony Stewart. It is on April 24th at noon, I believe, in this room. And I think there will be opportunity for some discussion after their presentation, really on the work that they did with Aryan Nations.
Wonderful, great. Sorry, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I knew there was an event. I wasn't sure if it was related to ASNC, so...
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Paul, that was a great mission statement that ASNC has put out. That's really good.
I'm glad you like it.
Anything else? Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Staff Assembly, Tom Green.
Good evening, Chair Dunlap, members of the Board. Thank you for having me here tonight. Before I begin, I have to say my office is dangerously closed to Emerys, and I think I've eaten there five times already this year, so I would just absolutely attest to the quality of its food is insane. In keeping with that theme, we had a smorgasbord of speakers, topics, and announcements at our February 13th meeting, so I'll get right to it. Melanie Dorch from the Foundation gave you an update on the employee giving campaign and how staff can participate. The campaign wrapped up last Friday. Melanie played a powerful video for staff that demonstrated the direct impact employee support can have on student lives. We also heard from Brian Segwin, who represented the Cardinal Reads Common Reads Committee. Brian went over the selection process and how the book was selected. It was narrowed down from a fairly lengthy list of books that were proposed by the NIC community. He revealed the next book that has been selected after the current book, which is Tribe. And I don't want to give away the book title here just because I haven't had a chance to run it by Brian, and I don't want to steal his thunder or spoil the surprise. So I can't say that it deals with the effects of technology and what these effects have on various segments of society. It also looks promising that the author of the book will be present on campus in the spring of 2021. I think that's the first time that one of the authors of the books has actually been able to come here to present. And of course, copies of the book will be available at Mosted Library. And our third speaker was Diana Rens, who gave a presentation on the new IRB draft policy. For those who don't know, IRB stands for Institutional Review Board. It's an administrative body established to protect the rights and welfare of human research subjects who participate in activities conducted under the auspices of an institution. So for example, if someone wanted to survey a segment of the NIC population, the IRB would ensure that proper protocols followed and everything is safe and ethical. Diana said the draft policy and procedure were currently being finalized and should be ready for review any day now. That's my report. Was there any questions?
Questions or comments for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, as you move to your new job within the college, will you still be representing the Staff Assembly?
Yes, sir. I absolutely intend to, I'll be moving out to the Workforce Training Center in a few weeks, but I'll still be here every once a month with y'all.
Well, congratulations on your new position.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You bet. Chris Pelchat with the Faculty Assembly.
Chair Dunlap, fellow members of the Board, thanks for having me here tonight. At the Faculty Assembly Meeting for February, we started with the Senate Report, and my report as Chair. I discussed the meetings that I attended that month and went over the things that they might find interesting. The one thing that came up that they had a point of interest in was a discussion that President McLennan and I had about how the college was going to be making decisions about open positions as they come available this year. And I talked about how a metric has been put in place to evaluate positions as they come up to decide whether we're going to hire, rehire for those positions. And their main point of concern was, is that metric going to be shared publicly on campus? Which I haven't told them yet, but President McLennan and I discussed that, and it will be something that will be forward-facing for the NIC community, so they'll be happy about that. There was also some discussion amongst the faculty around this topic, and their interest in creating an ad hoc committee to draft some guidance for the college from the faculty about potential rehires, but there was no formal action taken to establish that group. We did conduct a bunch of business at this meeting. Several motions came forward. The first one was about Policy Procedure 3.0208, focusing on faculty employment. And there was a motion to move that forward to the Senate. It has been in our old business as the Assembly for four months, so we were happy to have a vote on that and have it moved forward. The vote was successful but not unanimous, so there were still some points of dissent amongst or about the policy and procedure. Most of it was the policy procedures trying to make the process of employment a little more open to flexibility. And there was some concern about some points about specific degrees required for faculty. But we have transitioned those requirements to job descriptions rather than the procedure itself, so there's debate about that, but the motion did move forward successfully. We also held a motion to move the policy procedure for the IRB, which Tom just discussed. There was full support amongst the faculty for that to happen, and several folks in the room were excited that we've established that entity. I guess there had been times in our history where it has been difficult to move forward with grants and other research projects when we didn't have an entity on campus. We had to partner with other institutions to make that happen. So that's going to be fantastic for faculty that do that level of work. There was also a motion made to endorse a letter that was written by Lewis and Clark State College faculty in opposition to portions of a proposed new policy written by the State Board related to textbook and instructional affordability, and this motion passed unanimously. I don't know if folks have read this particular State Board policy that's been put forward, but there are portions within it that mandate that all common indexed courses across the state have to provide some type of open educational resource in at least one of the sections per semester being offered. And then there's also a caveat in there that all dual credit, have to, dual credit offerings have to provide that also. And there's firm belief amongst the faculty that we do a good job across the state in making sure that there are low-cost instructional resources for the students already, and that taking that freedom away from faculty as far as the choices that they have for their courses is an infringement on academic freedom. And so we've endorsed that letter. We also had remarks from Brian Segwin and Melanie Dorch about Cardinal Reads and employee giving, which Tom also did an excellent job on discussing what happened there. This concludes my report. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions, comments for Chris?
I do.
Trustee Banducci?
I don't know if it's actually for Chris, and I'm not sure we're also on the agenda to ask it, so if it wants to be answered later, that's fine. But you mentioned about the open positions and when things would get filled and things like that, and I learned earlier tonight of one of our employees that's taken the early retirement. I was not aware of that. So now my question and my thoughts are, how many people are taking advantage of early retirement? How many open positions do we have? What's that looking like? I'm curious.
President McLennan?
Chair Dunlap, Trustee Banducci, I believe the number is 14. We do have some additional retirees this year that did not qualify for eligibility in the, in the early retirement option, who are retired. I think that's three additional, so 17 retirees that we know of so far, but 14 on the early buyout option. And then, and if I can just address one other piece of that, if the Board recalls that in our, in our budget work that we've done, and we started that early this year for some obvious reasons, we budgeted 18 of those positions, of which we would plan to refill nine of them. We also budgeted five non-retired positions, but positions that would open up that we would not refill also, and that's over the next three years that we, as we've built that structural piece out. So what Chris is talking about and the work that we began a while back, and that will go out this week actually, if it hasn't already gone out, is a process on how we're making those decisions. You know, what are the criteria that we're using to make them, to consider them, and then also what are some of the conditions that we want to consider, things like restructuring or breaking a job into, from full-time to part-time, or you know, something like that. So again, I will be sharing that. The early read on, from a budget perspective and the activity we've had, both in vacated positions and the early retirement buyout, is that we're going to be able to meet our budget projections.
Anything else, Trustee Banducci?
No, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Chris, thank you very much. Senate, Ben Tishida.
Chair Dunlap, members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The Senate has met three times since the last Board of Trustees meeting, and we tackled, I think, more policies and procedures in that time than we have in the entire year, so this will be a little longer. So we met January 16th, 30th, and then last Thursday, February 20th. The policies and procedures we looked at, we had received comments from the President back... the president back on procedure 3.10, which is Staff Professional Development Plan. There was just one comment or revision the president had recommended. That one, that particular procedure being impacting staff only, was staff-only voting on that one, and the staff approved that edit unanimously. So that one is finished off. We also looked at procedure 2.01.04 initiation revision and elimination of policy and procedure, the procedure particularly. Again, we had received comments back, and we approved that one, and so that one has been finalized finally. Moving forward, we had some new things submitted. Procedure 2.0301, which is on committees. There's a policy that goes with that, but we had just recommendations from the procedure that was submitted by the Staff and Faculty Assembly Chairs, as well as Shannon, comments around the process around committees and trying to clean that up. That does move, the movement was to fill committee assignments in the springtime rather than early in the fall, to try and get those committee assignments and committees really going, hit the ground running in the fall. So we looked at that and approved those changes. We also had several HR-related policies and procedures. We had policy 3.01, which is employee categories. There was some structural changes to that one. We used to have classifications of employees, and now we went to more titles. That one was submitted by Chris Martin and Karen Hubbard. They were on hand for questions. We approved those changes. There's no procedure attached to that. It's really just a definition of positions. We had policy and procedure 3.02.03, which is filling vacant positions. Again, we had Chris Martin and Karen Hubbard on hand to look at that one. We worked through that procedure and policy in a couple of meetings and approved that policy and procedure. We also had, our last policy and procedure was 3.02.33 reclassification of positions. That one, again, was staff only, and so it was staff-only voting. I did make a bit of an oops. I missed that it was kind of a staff-only policy and procedure when I brought it to the first meeting. I was kindly informed that it was staff-only during that meeting, and so I followed up in the next meeting with making sure that was taken care of. We did have also a couple of non-policy and procedure things that came up. There's the Hedlin Vocational Center renaming that you'll see later tonight. We did see that and approved that change. We also had a standing committee proposal. So there was the president's Advisory Council Standing Committee proposal was submitted to us. It was a former ad hoc committee. There was a proposal to move that to a standing, full-time standing committee, and we did approve that with one recommendation to add in the past chair of the Senate as a member of that committee, in line with procedure 2.01.04, which outlines a new committee on the process of policy and procedure revisions. The past chair of the Senate will be the chair of that committee, trying to organize policy and procedure revisions around campus, and so we thought it appropriate to include that position with the president's Advisory Council, a nice audience to encourage such things. Let's see. The other two items I'll mention, we did have a meeting tomorrow, but we were so effective that we got through everything we needed to, so we didn't have anything new. So everyone was happy to hear that we could cancel tomorrow's meeting. So we do have two meetings set up for March, so we will be meeting again in March. We also adjusted one of our April meetings. Our April 16th meeting, we went ahead and scheduled that to be specifically not for policy and procedures, but for accreditation. That's when the accreditation team will be on hand, and they do want to meet with the Senate. So we said, let's make our, one of our meetings just for that. So, yeah, that was our action since the last board meeting.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions or comments for Ben?
Well, just real quick, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
You know, I like policy, but I can't hold a candle to you, Ben, and all the policy that you've been reviewing. It's a lot of work.
I, I have to put it on to our senators. They do an amazing job at, at putting in a lot of work and effort into that. I do some, some things as well, but, but yeah, I definitely put it on to our senators, and they, they do a lot of great work to-
Please thank them for their efforts.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
And to all our constituents, thank you for your role that you take on and the extra work in your role as part of the college governance. So thank you very much. Well, we have Mindy Thorpe next, and she's going to talk to us about the 2020 census. And I had asked Mindy earlier that, once the census data is gathered, would she be willing to come back and report out to us to let us know how that impacts the college and the population in our immediate area? And she said she would be willing to do that.
I would love to, yes.
So thank you, and it ends.
After all this work, I'm going to be very interested in the data and how it turns out compared to 2010. But Chair Dunlap, thank you. Board of Trustees, thank you for your time this evening. A special shout-out to Maureen Dolan for getting me here tonight and her dedication to our Cootney County Complete Count Committee that she has been doing quite a bit of work on. So thank you for the support and the opportunity to get this last bit of outreach to the community and to, to you as far as the 2020 census goes. So just a little bit of backstory. I always find it quite interesting that the decennial census, decennial, because the U.S. Census Bureau produces 130, over 130 surveys, but the decennial census, the questionnaire itself, this was entered into our Constitution in 1787, with the first one taking place in 1790. It was completed by 16 U.S. Marshals, there are 650 assistants, and it was done on horseback. The final tally after 18 months was 3.9 million people in the United States in 1790, and that included nearly 700,000 slaves. This is our 24th decennial census, and it's changed quite a bit from the first one in 1790. This is our first one ever that we can respond online. It's very exciting for us because we will be working with live data coming in. And just to give, you know, just anybody in the room tonight, a little history about the decennial census, you know, this is a huge undertaking. This is the, the biggest peacetime mobilization of a workforce in our country that happens every 10 years. This simple, it's not simple, this operation really impacts so much that, you know, a lot of the people in the community do not know. And that's why I'm here, for education and awareness, to make sure that we are getting the facts out there, what the decennial census is and what it does. So, you know, the population count is, directly impacts our House of Representatives and how many seats we have in the House, you know, as far as the states go. It also directs federal funding. We have over $675 billion of federal funding going out in, with the results from this particular census. And there are, there are so many different ways that federal funds impact all of us day-to-day. You know, we are all affected by it, some more than others, but you know, the things that we don't think about every single day, transportation, emergency services, you know, the seniors and children really are impacted by federal funds a lot as well. We really primarily focus on reaching out to hard-to-count populations. Children five and under are a hard-to-count population. Young adults 18 to 24 are a hard-to-count population, and that is, you know, primarily, you know, largely due to if they are students and not knowing where they are and not knowing how we're going to get them counted. So we do work with a lot of different hard-to-count populations. And I did bring a packet for everybody, so if you, you know, make sure you, in your spare time, read through some of these, but you know, some of these items in here are really fantastic for any platforms that you may have to get this information out. So the decennial census is the only survey that the Census Bureau produces that is actually mandatory by law that we complete and we respond to. It, we want it to feel like a civic duty, you know, that we are doing our part in making sure that we are counted. And the decennial census counts everybody living in the United States on or around April 1st of that decennial year. No matter what capacity they are here in the United States, we still count them, and that is how it was designed. The decennial census was also designed to be self-response. So the first primary way that we will invite people to respond, there will be a postcard sent out mid-March, and we will invite everybody to respond online first and foremost, which is, again, I'm kind of a data, a data nerd, so I love looking at the data, and the live data coming in will be fascinating. The second way to respond would be by phone, and then the third way to respond would be the old-fashioned paper form. We all know what happens if we don't respond by those three manners. We could potentially get an enumerator at our door. Speaking of enumerators, we are still hiring. College students, hint, hint over here, are perfect candidates for these positions because they're flexible and they could be, you know, work around different schedules. Seniors are also a great, a great population for these particular jobs as well. And I actually know many people that do this every 10 years because it's an extra-earning opportunity. So, you know, please keep that in mind, that we are still hiring for the enumerators on the ground operations, which will go through July, end of July. So I have a lot of questions about privacy within the questions themselves. There are 10 questions on the decennial questionnaire, and all of those answers that we respond with are protected by Title 13 and Title 26 of the U.S. Code, and they are protected for 72 years. So in 72 years, those answers will be released to the National Archives, and that is where the majority of all the genealogy sites are pulling their information from. Oddly enough, I have had a lot of questions, or phone calls from genealogy groups wanting to speak to their, their groups as well, because the census, the decennial census is a huge, a huge interest to them as well. So I wanted to, if it's possible, to show you the website where people will go. It's 2020census.gov. Let me turn this over here. And, okay. I'm just looking for the Chrome or... Thank you so much. 2020census.gov. The actual response site will go live mid-March. I will show you what it looks like right now. It is, the response site is embedded within our own site for confidentiality purposes. It's encrypted. All the, there we go. There it is. Thank you very much. So all of the, the responses are encrypted, and as soon as the, the questionnaire is completed, the answers actually go off the site, and they, they go into Data Land, wherever that might be. But right here where it says, the, the button there, "Get Involved," that will be a button that will say, "Respond Now," and that is not live. But again, mid-March, if there's a document in your package that says how the 2020 census will invite everyone to respond, there is a timeline in there, and it's staggered as far as the postcards that are initially mailed for inviting, to invite everyone to respond. And it's staggered for a reason, because, you know, we want those responses coming in different, you know, at different times, just for capacity purposes. I've been told that the site has been load-tested. It's ready to go. That being said, you know, there's always the fear that, you know, someone like LeBron James could potentially tweet saying, "Hey, fill out your census with me right now," and then we'll see how much load that site can take. But that'd be a great problem to have, right? But the, there is a nice video that I would love to show everybody, if that's possible. Is the 2020 census? Every 10 years, the census records everyone living in this country. It's written in the Constitution, and comes in a questionnaire that counts everyone who lives at your address on April 1st. The data can be used to inform funding for services like fire stations, schools, clinics, and representation that affect your community. Shake your future. Start here. Visit 2020census.gov. There you go. There are a lot of videos out there. There are documents for every population out there. Everything is available in PDF form. And in your packet, the very first 2020 at a glance, my information is on the back of, back bottom there, if anyone would like to get ahold of me in the future. But I know the time is limited, so I'll take questions if anyone has any for me.
Any questions or comments for Mindy? Mr. Howard?
Mindy, you might want to tell everybody how they can get ahold of whoever they need to get ahold of if they want a job as a census taker.
Okay. It is 2020census/jobs, and they, and it is an application, an online application only. They must be 18 or older. They must be a U.S. citizen and must have a valid email address. Everything is done through email. And what I encourage people to do is apply. And you might not hear back from anyone right away, but just hold tight because, think about it, think about the tens of thousands of people that are being hired. So it is a little bit of a process, but thank you for the question.
So, Mindy, is your office in Coeur d'Alene, and how big of a region are you responsible for?
I am, I am in my home office in Post Falls, and I am part of the Los Angeles region. And the Los Angeles region supports seven states. So Idaho is one, Washington, Oregon, Hawaii, Alaska, Nevada, and California. So those are the seven states in our region out of Los Angeles. So my main, my main office, other than my home office, is in Boise.
Oh, okay.
And I do travel there quite often, and then, you know, everybody else is in Los Angeles. I am respons, well, I was responsible for the northern 10 counties of Idaho, so I had 22,000 square miles to cover in the last year and a half. We have shifted a little bit from territorial areas and now to operations. So now I am actually leading the state of Idaho in several different operations. One is called Mobile Questionnaire Assistance, and we are looking, what we do is we look at census tracts, and we see what their low-response score is. So for example, just to give you an example here, Cootney County has, you know, roughly 160,000 people, and on average, the low-response score, if we looked at all the different census tracts and averaged them out, it's sitting about 20%. So if we think about what that, what does that mean? Low-response score means that is our estimate based on historical data that will not respond to the decennial questionnaire. So that would be potentially our undercount. So what we're doing is, we are now targeting those census tracts that have the higher-low response scores. We are not targeting as much of the hard-to-count populations as much as these census tracts in the, in the new operations that start mid-March, and we will target those from the historical data from about mid-March to mid-April. In mid-April, the focus on those census tracts will strictly be on the live data coming in. We will see what, who is responding where, and those areas and census tracts that we do not have a good response from, we will start targeting those. We'll start putting these mobile questionnaire assistance centers, so to speak. It's not really a center. It's just a mobile, a mobile operation, taking census staff into a location in that particular census tract, and they will have their devices there, you know, the, the government-issued devices, and assist people that might want to complete their census questionnaire right then and there. And that's where we will look for the help from the community within the outreach and getting the, the information out where those locations might be. So, you know, getting the messaging out, if there are dedicated websites or dedicated social media accounts, that could perhaps help with the support of that. social media accounts, that could perhaps help with the support of that and say, "Hey, it's not too late." You know, even though Census Day is always April 1st of that decennial year, they can still technically respond for, you know, a couple, you know, a couple months after that.
Any other comments or questions for Mindy?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight.
All right, thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Yep. Well, next we'll have the President's Report. President McLennan.
I snuck a little bit of it in there during Chris's report, so I'll try to be brief here. At the end of my report, I'm going to ask Chris to go over the, the financial report that you all have a copy of. I spent the, most of the day down in Boise today, started with the Joint Finance Appropriations Committee, where today was the community college bill, or funding setting activity. It was a very brief activity. They, they accepted all the governor's recommendations, which, as you all know, but we're saying here, includes a 2% reduction in our, in our state funding and the negative EWA for NIC as well. We were hopeful, because of the action taken last week with the four-year institutions in the same process for them, where those schools that had negative EWA numbers were held harmless. And that fact, that does in fact still remain the case. We're watching that. We, we don't believe that, for obvious reasons, that community colleges should be treated differently than the four-years. But I've been assured that, that there's movement to reconcile that and level the playing ground. But at, at least at this point for us, we do have those negative numbers. That was followed up by a panel presentation, question, conversation with Idaho Business for Education. All eight, two, and four-year public presidents participated in that. It was a, it was a, you know, it felt like a family reunion of sorts, because, you know, those are our, our friends. I mean, they're, they're, they have high value in education, and they want to find ways to support all education in Idaho, but certainly very interested in, in higher education. And I, I guess the takeaway from that today is really starting to see, to a president, the commitment and the interest in, in cooperation and collaboration throughout the system and, and working together. And you could see in the room how that translated to those business, community leaders in Idaho Business for Education. That was followed by a meeting of those two and four-year presidents, the President's Leadership Council. Majority of our meeting today, which I had to leave early to catch a plane to be here, was around the, this quick, furious, intense work around looking at funding, higher education funding model. And a lot of, a lot of these early efforts are really at orienting some of our newer presidents, frankly, to a lot of the work that's already been done and, and, and bringing everybody up to speed, but looking at a very quick turnaround to make recommendations to the governor's office by the end of June. So, there's that. And then, that, that group that's looking at funding expands beyond the President's Leadership Council, and includes representatives from the governor's office, from the legislature, and the State Board. And that group had its first initial meeting last week. I want to give a little bit of a shout-out. There's a lot of transition. It's now settling down in the Department of Labor, CTE, and, and we took the lead on writing a federal grant, actually Department of Labor grant, on closing the skills grant in North Idaho College. Christie Doyle and Hannah Patton continue to just knock it out of the park when it comes to grant-writing. We received that grant, it will bring 1.0, well, almost $2 million to the state of Idaho. And that grant is going to focus on Idaho apprenticeship partnerships around cybersecurity and IT, healthcare, and advanced manufacturing. We'll realize, I think, somewhere around $300,000 from that grant. But that grant would not be had, had not North Idaho College taken the lead on it for the state of Idaho. So I want to really recognize the efforts of the team that, that pulled that together. We also reported through our innovation entrepreneurship efforts, one of the things that we picked up as we've been going on this journey, is the Northwest Entrepreneur Competition. That's the largest entrepreneurship competition in the Northwest. And this year, 111 teams submitted entry to that competition. That's doubled the size last year. And we're in, on track to transition, actually taking over that event. And in fact, and this is through a partnership with the University District in Spokane, but North Idaho College has been predominantly the entity making this work, and again, doubling the size. Ryan Arnold is largely responsible for that. In fact, tonight, in the DeArmond Building, one key phase of that competition is taking place in the, it's called the Pitch Premier Event, and that's happening this evening. Last week, Dr. Burns and I had the opportunity to travel to Idaho Falls. I think we had a 6 o'clock in the morning flight on Sunday, was that? Yeah. There's not a lot of easy ways to get there. But that was the four community colleges and their teams working with Idaho National Laboratory in the cybersecurity space. And I don't have a lot to report on that, other than, we are uniquely positioned in Idaho because of the Idaho National Lab, their intellectual capacity, the data that they have in real-time, real-life cyber attacks. And one of the ideas that we're looking at is, is creating a sandbox of expertise and populated incidence of cyber, and the, and the field of cyber is so vast and diverse now, I won't, I won't try to explain all that. But it's the, the resources that Idaho, the Idaho National Lab are bringing to this, and the scale that it's going to help Idaho and our programs get to is phenomenal. So really pleased with the progress of that work. And I think that concludes my comments. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Chris Martin to go through the financials, and then if there are any questions on anything I report, I'd be happy to take those.
Thank you, Dr. McLennan. Board, you have a copy of the January financial report in front of you, and I just want to take a couple of minutes to go through some of the highlights, as we've now completed half of our fiscal year. We are trending at 85% of budget for tuition and fee revenue this fiscal year, and that is continuing to hold. Couple of things just to note about tuition and fee revenue. We're seeing a change in the mix, different than we had budgeted. So essentially, we're seeing changes in how students are coming to us, whether they be Cootney County residents, non-district residents, or out of state. And so, that's part of what's making up that, that flux. The other piece there is, traditionally, we've had 60% of our revenue come in, in the fall semester, and now it's at 50%. So, that's put a little more pressure on spring than we've had in the past, but that's really what's driving those changes. And we expect this to hold at, at 85% of budget throughout the rest of the fiscal year. The really positive news here is that outside of tuition and fee revenue, our non-operating revenues are coming in really strong and are compensating for that. One key area I'd mentioned is other non, other non-operating revenues. We're up 56% year-to-date, based off where we thought we would be. That is in large effect due to the positive things we've seen in the market and with interest income. So that's, interest in investments has come in, obviously better than we had forecasted, and that's helping offset that. So, overall, for the month of January, year-to-date, we're down 4%, off of our budget, overall revenues in the month of, of January, year-to-date. So that's, that's the $1 million that you're seeing there compared to budget. On the expense side, it continues to be a good story, as you would expect, as we've had revenues come in less than budget, we've had expenses come in also less than budget. The big piece here is total payroll is down 7% from where we expected it to be. So we've saved 7%, if you will, year-to-date on payroll expenses. This is in large part due to salary savings and salary salvage that's being held. When a position turns over, it's obviously not replaced immediately, and so that's what's driving a big portion of that. Also, our part-time faculty numbers, as you would expect, are down considerably from where we thought we would be, in large part due to enrollment. So that would be what you would anticipate. Everything else is coming in really where we thought it would be. There's a couple of areas in general expenses. We're watching those very, very closely. Some of the anomalies that you're seeing there are just due to timing. So the expenses happened more soon in the year than we had forecasted them, and that's going to wash itself out as we go through the rest of the fiscal year. But overall, our net income at this point in time is, is positive, with expense recovery at this point, $2 million less than we had anticipated at this point in time. Any questions?
Questions, comments for either Chris or President McLennan? Trustee Wood.
Mr. Chair, if we could just get back on the, the recommendation by the governor's office, since we have our representative here, and thank you for coming to our meetings. The conversations that are going on are, certainly have us all very concerned. Not only with the governor's holdback, but the potential for property tax freeze. It's just, I would like to very clearly talk about the history of property taxes with North Idaho College. Chris Martin gave me a very good rundown the other day, and I'm going to quote from memory, I think in the last six years, there's been four years at a 0% and then two years at a 1%. So that, that shows you a very conservative board, that we do listen to our constituents, and we do everything we can to keep the costs down, the taxes low. With that said, we do have services we have to provide. And so I, there's a real fear that I'm feeling, we'll just be real blunt about this, that those, that kind of cuts to funding, two of the prongs that support us. We could really be looking potentially at having to shutter programs. That's a big deal. When we shutter programs, that means students can't search out and get those degrees that get them the high-paying jobs. So, whatever conversations we need to keep having with the governor's office to, to help them understand that this could be critical to the college, appreciate that work, appreciate you being here tonight. I'm not sure where this goes from here, I know you'll keep us updated, but it appears to be critical at this point.
Well, the other piece of that, if I could add on, is that there is a consideration of ending or reducing occupancy costs for new construction. And what that means is that the state gets a free building from colleges and universities that self-fund those buildings, but now is reneging on the previous promise of funding occupancy costs, which means that the operation costs for those buildings will come out of hide. And so when you combine that with a tax freeze, enrollment being down, EWA clawback, I mean, we are put in an extreme disadvantage, and, and you're absolutely right, Trustee Wood, we get to a point where we begin to look at closing programs, or may have to close programs. And when we talk about particularly closing career and technical programs, that impacts the workforce for North Idaho. So I hope our message is loud and clear that with all the reductions to funding higher education, that's going to have a severe impact on colleges and universities. Yeah, President McLennan?
Thank you. I, I just want to add that, as I, can't quite say closeout, but near the end of my fourth year, I have yet to experience a budget cycle that was, looked anything like the last one. And so a lot of the conversations that we're having, and the initial conversations around this funding is, our institutions, we need some predictability. And so, it, the, the occupancy cost is a, is a good point, in the sense that when we plan a facility, you know, our, when we look at our facility master plan, we're, we're looking at a, at a, at a near horizon of 10 years, and it is a long horizon far beyond that 10 years. And, and the effort and the planning that goes into that, goes into that with those variables and the rules that are existing when you're doing that. And so if we don't have the certainty of that, if the, if the rug, so to speak, is pulled out from under you after the fact of your commitment, then, and I understand the occupancy argument in terms of control over that, that process, but, you know, you've pointed out, Chair Dunlap, the, where, especially where institutions are self-funding priority facilities that are actually program-related to providing education and training, in our case, to North Idaho, that to have those rules change in the, after the fact is pretty problematic. So, the, the reduction in funding, you know, with EWA, it can go down dramatically. It's a, it's a three-year average. You know, some states have a, a safety net. Washington State, for example, over a two-year biennium, funding can't be reduced more than 2%. And so, those are the conversations that we're having now. I think what we really want is, we want to know what the rules are going forward, and that we can see a sustainable pathway forward to do the work that we need to do in Idaho. I'm a little concerned on the timeline of this, of being as quick as it is, that we're going to be able to do the meaningful work that, I mean, we're all committed to it, and we're definitely working on it, but it's a very ambitious timeframe. And maybe we'll get 90% of it, you know, figured out between now and then. It's a conversation that needs to be happening.
Trustee Howard.
I guess I would like to, at least, give some verbal weight to an element of this whole funding process that I, quite frankly, don't, don't understand. I hear the governor, governor saying that he's holding education harmless, and yet, as you look into the details of that, he's not holding higher education harmless. And I, I still think that there is a lack of understanding amongst a lot of people in, in Boise and the legislature about the value of community colleges, that they're an educational bridge, which includes K-12 and higher education. So if you're going to hold at least K-12 education harmless, that should include a significant portion of the efforts that we have here on community college campuses. Because we, I think if you looked at the population of the GEDs, the General Education degrees, the Adult Basic Education, and the Dual Credit, all of which, right, deal with essentially K-12-level education, maybe applied in a, in a community college environment. We should be held harmless for those efforts that we're doing, because that is essentially K-12 education. And I don't see that kind of an understanding coming out of the legislature, that, that community colleges aren't the same as a four-year institution, they're maybe not the same as K-12, they're a bridge that includes both. And there's a significant portion of what we do that is what K-12 does, and we should be held harmless with regard to those efforts that we make, at least for that population.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you. Trustee Banducci, do you have a K-Tech report for us?
Very short.
Okay.
They're doing, doing great. The joint programs that we're working with them, the collision repair and the HVAC are doing quite well. Not so long ago had their skills competition, and that all went very well. Got their hard hats and hot dogs, and I can't remember exactly all that goes with that, that's coming up, that'll do well. Sure would be well-attended. And enrollment's an all-time high, and they're on budget, life is good.
Thank you. Chris Martin, do you have an update on Meyer Health Science expansion?
Chair Dunlap, just briefly, tomorrow we're meeting with all the lab stakeholders to go through the final walkthrough of, of the documents, before we complete construction documents. So that's the last walkthrough of all of our users, to make sure that every, literally I is dotted and T is crossed as we go through that. And so that's the final step of the process before we go into construction documents and bidding.
Okay. Thank you. Old Business, Tab 1, we've got Dr. McLennan with the second reading of our copyright policy.
This was presented last board meeting, and I won't read the background discussion again, but am requesting the board consider a motion to adopt copyright policy from North Idaho College.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Wood.
I would make a motion to adopt the copyright policy of North Idaho College.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Under New Business, first reading, action, or potential action for Head Start Grant, and we have Beth Ann Fuller.
Chair Dunlap, Board of Trustees, Dr. McLennan, and guests, thank you very much for allowing me to come with the, the first reading of our continuation grant for Head Start, which would include our baseline grant. That is the first year of our new five- would include our baseline grant. That is the first year of our new five-year grant, and that is why it's so thick. I apologize. And with, with that is our narrative and our policies, including our selection for criteria of enrollment of children, and also our org chart, our Training and Technical Assistance Plan, our budget and budget narrative, along with our school readiness goals. I just wanted to mention quickly that we are also being offered two more funding streams this year, which we're very excited about, which would be, along with our baseline grant, we're being offered a COLA, a Cost of Living Adjustment, and a Quality Improvement Increase in Funding. And those funding streams, the letters that are going to give us the exact amounts that we're being offered in addition to this are not here yet, and we anticipate any day getting those, possibly an approximate 2% Cost of Living Adjustment, and a 2.6% Quality Improvement Adjustment. And that would be for specifically to increase trauma-informed practices in our program. So, the, the criteria for how we can apply for that has not been released yet, but in next month, in our second reading, I hope to be able to bring an adjusted budget and budget narrative and our, and our program goals that would reflect what that quality improvement and that Cost of Living Adjustment would look like and how we'd like to apply it. So, if I may answer any questions that you have about any of the attachments or...
Beth Ann, when is the grant due?
So, the grant is due April 1st. So, we anticipate that the COLA and the Quality Improvement Funds would also be due at the same time, but I am not sure about that.
Okay. Trustee Wood?
Thank you. Well, Beth Ann, you and your team always do a really nice job on your grant application. I was really impressed with the, from the fall checkpoint to the winter checkpoint, the percentages that you were, managed to gain. Still wish we could do more, but the other part of the grant that is always just a little bit heartbreaking is that the funding only covers 25% of the population of need. And that is just so hard to wrap your mind around. So, doing the numbers, and I could be off a little bit, but approximately, that means there's 890 children in this region that we can't help with Head Start Early Learning. That's the size of an elementary school.
Yes.
Of kids that we can't help. I absolutely commend you and your staff for doing what you can do with the small amount of money from the federal government. Wouldn't we all love to be able to call up our representatives in Washington, DC, and suggest that more funding come this way, rather than some of the places it's going? So, I've gotten used to writing them lots of letters. I'm happy to do that. Anyway, I was impressed with your grant application. Thank you.
Trustee Howard?
Beth Ann, this is a year one of a five-year grant.
Right.
And is, do you have to reapply every year, or is this, once the grant is applied for the five years, do you have to do anything further to maintain it?
So, what they do is offer us a five-year grant period, and then each year, they will give us our funding letter telling us what we have the right to apply for, what amount of funding that we can apply for. And then, the first year is the year that they want to hear the most detail. They want to hear about how we came up with the process and the, and they'd like to see that whatever our goals are that we set, that we set them over that whole five-year period. So, it's, it's more of a process at first, and then what we do is just updates each year for each of those pieces that they want to see the most detailed this year in. So, then, we would just give them, if there were no changes to a certain area, then we would just tell them, for an example, like if we do not change our target area, we would just say, no changes to the target area.
In terms of the board's involvement, though, if we approve the five-year grant, but it's really renewed every year with additional information, you bring it to us every year for approval?
Yes.
Okay. Will that include the 2% COLA and the 2.6% Quality Improvement Adjustment? That's just for the first year?
For the first year.
All right. So, that may or may not...
But it's ongoing.
That, it is ongoing?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions or comments. Beth Ann, could you bring this back to the
March meeting, since it's not due until April, with the understanding that you may have that additional information that would be part of the application?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the first reading of the Hedland Vocational Center renaming. Chris Martin?
Chair Dunlap, members of the board, a small history lesson. You probably know the Hedland Building as the Hedland Building, but when you actually drive by, it is officially named the Hedland Vocational Education Center. And with the changes in how we address CTE, the vocational moniker, number one, no longer holds true, and also, that is not the home of the majority of our CTE programs. So, our request is to simply have the formal naming on the building removed, and refer to this building as it currently is, as the Hedland Building, on the actual edifice, as well as on campus maps and signage.
Questions, comments?
No. This is the first reading, and we're going to have questions.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Let's see. Board Chairs Report. Let's see, I was told we had to be out of here by 7:30 because of the last basketball game being played tonight. I see I'm nine minutes late.
It depends on your report, how long.
Well, my apologies, Trustee Howard here. It's a very short report. On March 10th, the Idaho Community College Consortium, which is comprised of the four community colleges, will be meeting in Boise, and that includes the Presidents and the Board Chairs. Of primary interest and discussion will be the state of funding for community colleges within the state, based on, on the Governor's Budget. I'd also like to congratulate Chris Carlson, the women's basketball coach. Tonight is his last basketball game.
Home game.
Home game?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. He's, he's been here for 16 years. He coached the women's basketball team to a national championship in 2011, and he's decided it's time to retire, and so we wish him the very best. And then, lastly, Christie Doyle, thank you for all your work on that grant for the state of Idaho, not just for North Idaho College, but we sure appreciate that. And that concludes my report. Any comments for the good of the order? If not, meeting adjourned.
May I correct my advertisement for the Tony Stewart and Norm Gissel presentation?
Please do.
Because I was just off on a couple of things.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. So, it is the Visiting Scholars Series. It is presented by the NIC Students Activity Board, and Tony's topic is "Social Justice Requires Courage in Action: Campuses and College Students." And Norm Gissel's presentation is "From Hate to Hope: How Idahoans Defeated the White Supremacy and How You Can Too." And the date is Tuesday, April 21st, and it will be held in this room, the Lake Court Lane Room.
What's the time again, Leah?
12 o'clock to 1 o'clock.
12 to 1. Okay. All right. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.